Mics are hot.
Okay, I show seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this regular battleground city council meeting to order is August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. If you're able, please rise for the pledge. Thank you. And Miss Hillyly roll, please.
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the role.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda approval. Any member sees a reason to move or to add or subtract agenda now would be the time. Otherwise, they'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. The motion by Councilmember Cortez is second by Councilmember Overholzer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There's unanimously. Brings us to summary reports and presentations. We're starting off with EMS District Number Two Board. Deputy Mayor Bowman or Councilmember Overholzer, whoever has the privilege, please.
Shane, you want to take this one? No. So our last meeting, we made a decision to approve. And so we're able to levy AMR fines for them being late towards EMS two to contribute to improvements on our three districts that are in EMS two. So we approved one hundred and twenty nine thousand for software and tablets to be equipped in each vehicle for better response times and better location. And we also added an additional meeting for September ninth as our interlocal agreement is coming near. We need to finalize that in preparation for next year. And that was it.
All right. I think you're up again on Echo.
Actually, Echo did not have a meeting. It was postponed this month, so it'll be next month.
Okay. And Urban County also did not have a meeting. It's a most of those meetings are towards the beginning of the year, so it's not a regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to C-Trans. Councilmember Cortez or Councilmember Farrar? Do we have a meeting?
No, we will have our meeting next block shift this month, later this month.
Okay. And finally, mosquito board. Councilmember Davis?
Well, we did have a meeting and we basically discussed budget and the only other thing is it's been a relatively quiet summer due to the Columbia River not rising to levels as in the past two years, so not as many mosquitoes. But really, it was just about the budget.
Okay. Any further reports? Yeah, that brings us to the mayor's report. All I have here is just a thank you to everybody involved in National Night Out. A big thank you to our vendors and sponsors. Jennifer Kirby with Prevention Together for putting it on and organizing that whole thing. We got to see the new wrap on the police cars. If nobody saw that, they look very sharp. But just it was a pretty, pretty well attended event. I know Councilmember Davis was pretty, pretty busy at the kitchen there. So I'll open it up to anybody else that wants to comment on National Night Out. Feel free.
I'll say it was a beautiful evening and I liked the location this time under the trees, but with the breeze, I think it helped bring a lot more of the community members out. It was really very pleasant.
I agree. Thank you. Yeah, I got very, very good reports from the new location, so. That brings us right into presentations. We do have the chair here for Clark County Commission on Aging, Mr. Franklin Johnson. Really appreciate you making the, making the appearance, sir. Looking forward to seeing what you had to say.
Thank you very much, Mayor McCoy, council members, key staff, and of course, the public. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm going to keep my remarks pretty brief tonight as I understand you have a very packed agenda. I have here with me another member of the Commission on Aging, April Schneider. And I don't, I don't see Mel Sanchez, so he might be coming, joining us a little bit later. What we're going to talk about today is the Aging Readiness Plan and the Commission on Aging and basically what we're about. Back in two thousand and twelve, the Clark County Council established the Commission on Aging and appointed nine members to be on the staff. Also, they prepared an Aging Readiness Plan because the potential at that time predicted that there would be one in four, if not more, citizens who would be sixty or over by the time we got to two thousand and twenty eight. And at the rate we're going now, we might meet that. Next, please. One of the key things that the commission does is we engage in public engagement. In preparing the Aging Readiness Plan, we held a series of workshops, one of which we held here last year, and got quite a bit of input from our public, members of the community about what they felt was important. We have combined that information into the chapters and come up with over ninety specific strategies. Our intent is to investigate each of those strategies, try and determine what has been implemented, what may be combined with something else, or if for some reason a strategy isn't feasible. And we want to have an obligation to report back to our citizens, to the public, exactly what happened with each of those strategies. Next, please. In the healthy communities, we had a number of strategies that address issues like safe food, access to healthy food. We had a number of situations where we have people in our senior community who depend on things like Meals for Wheels and other particular public efforts that they depend on to survive. And what we found out is that as we underwent the pandemic, a lot of these functions that delivered services to the public and to seniors in particular were interrupted. And so the biggest thing we found out was that the people who delivered these services were often their social outlet. They would talk, they would communicate, and when they delivered the meals, that was kind of like their interaction. And when the pandemic occurred, all of these interactions were basically cut off. No public gathering and so on. Next, please. We also have a chapter on housing issues, in particular affordable housing. We're looking at programs, how to modify homes so that people can age in place, hopefully, and also efforts to secure more low income housing. We have, have seniors in a variety of different financial situations and some are flush with cash, but others depend on access to a particular type of housing that they can afford. So we're trying to look at issues that affect the whole spectrum of clients in our aging community. Next, please. The mobility chapter deals primarily with issues and impacts to seniors' mobility. Some are able to use C-Trans, some have automobiles, but many are not able to drive or don't have access to vehicles. So they depend on C-Trans and other public methods of transportation to get around. And we're looking at ways that we can make those more accessible and easier for them to utilize. Next chapter, please. Our civic involvement chapter is really what we're going to be focusing on in the upcoming year. We want to be able to look at the strategies that we have generated and really look at how we can implement those strategies and which are going to be most usable and friendly to our senior population. One of the key issues that we have is that providing sidewalks so that people with motorized wheelchairs and other cars can use those, those facilities. And we've had situations where people were severely impacted just by the absence of, you know, paved streets or paved sidewalks. Next. Our emergency preparedness chapter is a new chapter that we included in our Aging Readiness Plan as a result of some of the impacts that we went through, through the pandemic. Not only was there severe interruption of services that seniors depend on, but there was no public gathering. And isolation became one of the key results of that where people felt cut off. If they didn't have an established caregiver and they weren't able to access their meals and so forth on the same routine schedule, sometimes it was reduced to like once or twice a week. And the biggest impact of that pandemic and the isolation was that they felt cut off from all the things they depend on, gathering at community events, public meals and so forth like that. All of these were eliminated. And so we came up with a series of issues that specifically related to emergency preparedness. We are currently engaged in a series with CRESSA, the Clark County Emergency Response, the nine one one folks. And they are conducting a series of presentations at our monthly meetings to help understand step by step how to prepare an emergency kit, how to prepare a go bag so that in the instance of wildfires and so forth, if you have a evacuate now situation, you don't really have time to pack like you would for a normal trip. So we have a step by step process each month, like how to put together your, your go bag, how to how to have a plan for if you get incur an emergency and you're separated from other family members. So look at all of these things in advance. But we've got to other issues like, okay, if you have medication that you depend on, try and have an extra week or two of medication so that if you have to evacuate, you're not going to have access to the same kind of services, both health and otherwise, that you would normally have. And all your public services that you normally depend on, fire, police and so forth, depending on the nature of the emergency, they're going to be tied up for several days, if not weeks, responding to the overall situation before they can come back and deal with their normal clientele. One of the surprising experiences that I had, I did a ride along with the Vancouver Fire Department several years ago. And all the calls we went on that night were basically EMT calls, people that couldn't afford health insurance, they call nine one one to get their medical. And I was really surprised. I didn't realize the degree of impact that we have on our public services, just simply from people with health issues. So our emergency preparedness has been our theme for this year, and we're looking at how we can continue to prepare our senior community. They are the most vulnerable. And so the senior community in effect is the weakest link. So if we can shore up that link, then we have a stronger and safer community all around. Next slide, please. We're looking now at how we go through the implementation process of basically vetting each of these strategies, seeing which are applicable, which are effective and so forth. And we're going to depend on feedback from our senior community utilizing these strategies to see what really works or what needs to be modified even further. Next, please. As we finalize this process of planning, we're trying to move into a more active and engaged posture. We are looking at over the next year, some events possibly at senior centers or living facilities to help actually walk them through the process of putting together to go bag and helping the, the staffs at these facilities understand how they need to manage the populations when an emergency event occurs. Next, please. One of the things that we have recently experienced, our county staff submitted the Aging Readiness Plan, the update in two thousand and twenty two. They submitted to the governor's office and we have been very pleasantly surprised to receive the governor's Smart Communities Award for our update of our Aging Readiness Plan. So the thing that we want to do is to make sure we have the opportunity to talk to folks like you and like you to let, let them know what the Aging Readiness Plan is about. One of the key pieces of that is a couple of years ago, we started the Silver Citizen Award. And this is an award given out, this was our most recent awardee, given out to, to a senior who is extremely active in the community, does a lot of volunteer work. And it's staggering to know the amount of things that some of these senior citizens do. There is, our first ship in several years ago was, she's now ninety eight, and she embarrasses me by how active she is. So there's always opportunities for anyone who is interested. There's a lot of volunteer opportunities. And if anyone is interested, next spring, we'll be having another application period if you would like to join the Commission on Aging. It's a completely volunteer organization and we're always welcome new bright ideas and faces. So keep that in mind. Is there any questions? And I rushed through that kind of quickly, but I wanted to be respectful of your time.
Any questions from council? Well, I appreciate you taking the time coming out here. Very important information. I know it may seem esoteric to some of us, but as somebody who just went through this with my mom, the aging in place and that information and the resources therein are pretty, pretty important. I'll also not gloss over the fact that he did mention how important sidewalks are to seniors. So I just want to make sure that's on the record and I'll be sure and reach out to Mr. Sanchez to give him an update on that project that I hope to have soon.
And let me just briefly extend apologies for the delay. We had never had a situation where we had a request from a sitting commission member to write a letter of support for a project. So we had to create a whole new process to do that. So that's why that's taken so long.
Well, as our city manager can attest, I'm kind of a pain, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Without further ado, it looks like we have an open office. Who is presenting? Is this Miss Hillyly presenting or doing the oath? Yes. So our city manager, Ms. Swanson's taking. So our city manager, Ms. Swanson's taking her oaths tonight. Oath of office. I'm sorry, what? We can, yeah.
I will say, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that it is a tremendous honor to serve as city clerk for Christina Swanson and a tremendous honor to administer the oath. Please raise your red hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christina Swanson.
Do solemnly affirm or swear
I solemnly swear or affirm
that I am a citizen of the United States
that I am a citizen of the United States
and of the state of Washington
and of the state of Washington
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws
and the Constitution and laws
of the state of Washington
of the state of Washington
and will, to the best of my judgment
and will, to the best of my judgment
faithfully and impartially
faithfully and impartially
perform all duties of city manager
perform all duties of city manager
for the city of Battleground
for the city of Battleground
county of Clark
county of Clark
state of Washington
state of Washington
as such duties are prescribed by law
as such duties are prescribed by law.
Family would like to come up and take pictures. You're certainly welcome to get some pictures in front of the seal.
While they're coming up, I just, I feel so blessed to serve as city manager for Battleground and it has been so wonderful these last four months to serve in this position, especially alongside such incredibly talented staff. So I am honored that the council has entrusted me to this position and I look forward to leading this city alongside you with the vision and goals that we have established. I do appreciate the attendance of most in this room. I look around and I've met so many people in the last four months. Some of them said that they were here tonight for the, for this. But it was a little bit of a surprise, not just my family in the back, but friends and former coworkers from Longview. So I would like for them to come up as well because it was a complete surprise. And you know who you are. That was a strong invitation.
Well, like I said to Ms. Swanson, welcome home. We hope you're here for a very long time. Okay, this brings us to Citizens Communications. We do have some, so I'll read the announcements. We'll open the meeting for Citizens Communications. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comments. The total time for comments shall not exceed 30 minutes. Counsel, we may have a couple over. So I'm going to go ahead and do three minutes. Is that okay? Okay. All comments should be directed to the city mayor. I want to make that, I'm going to repeat that one. All comments should be directed to the city mayor. So if you're going to call somebody names, I'm, I'm the one. The council may not be able to respond to individual comments and may refer citizens to a staff member to assist. This is an opportunity to hear from members of the public in a limited public forum, not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Although the city council desires to allow public comment, the city's business must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. I'm going to try to group these by subject. So I have one, Mr. Whipple regarding the Derky Park Master Plan.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. Caught me by surprise. I'm representing Susan Tripp on behalf of the Derky Master Park Plan. And she was in California, so she called me and if I might, I'd just read what she, her script. I just learned that the Derky Park Master Plan and others will be presented to the city council tonight, August 19th. I am in California visiting family, but will attend by Zoom. The goal is to open the park in phases with the parking lot and gravel trails first to give the residents the benefit they set on the PROS Plan survey was their top priority. Walking and jogging trails for health, relaxation and walking, walking the dog on leash. Any structures that will need costly maintenance should be, probably be avoided. Restrooms can come later with perhaps a vault porta potty initially. We want a public benefit after 32 years of no benefit with other amenities phased in as funds allow. And in my own neighborhood, a lady gave her farm to the city of Vancouver years ago, and I happen to be a beneficiary of being adjacent to that property. And I think I wish I knew who she was and, but I certainly appreciate that gift and what's meant to the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, somebody did not put their name, but their topic was community events.
Hello, my name is Jessica Cole. Sorry about that. I just wanted to say, thank you for the vote for the housing last week. I know that was very difficult with the housing and parking and I'd rather people have both, but I prefer housing if nothing. I know that was a hard choice to make. National Mineout was so cool to have, literally cool, to have on the other side of the park because there's more trees. Well, first of all, the temperature was a little lower than usual, a little. And then being in the shade was lovely. It was nice and cool. I actually need my jacket at the end, but then it's pack-up time, so I warmed up. And then I don't know if you were aware, I think it was Friday, on Friday, the Battleground Healthcare did a pop-up event with Thrive to Survive. I had only heard about it a few days prior, so I tried to let people know as much as possible, but they had, it was their first event and they had like 200 plus people show up. And they had things like free haircuts, Medicare and Medicaid enrollment, employment services, mobile pet care and mental health services and other things too. And I did talk to Sue and she said, you know, they want to bring it back more often and it's very weather dependent. And also that day was nice weather-wise because it was overcast a bit. And they have a nice awning that shaded most of the booth. So you know, if you go out there and talk to them and see if you could help them find other locations when the weather is not so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, we have Lynn Krasicich from Vancouver.
Hi, my name is Lynn Gersich and I came here tonight to ask you to stop fluoridation. Clark County has just announced that they have these PFAs, you know, PFAS in the water, high doses, and guess what the F is? Fluoride. So if you have this and you're purchasing water from Clark County and you're filling up wells or whatever you're doing with it, the fact is it's already poisoned. So you have two hazardous waste products in the water. These PFAs and you're adding sodium fluoride, which I just gave you the material safety data sheet that has a skull and crossbone on it. So you're continuing to add poison to water that's already poisoned. And if they can't get these out and they're at a high level, this isn't the only thing in that water. I also gave you all kinds of papers on what that actually is because when they did fracking and things, these PFAS, there's bunches of them. There's like 14 of that. And they all have other chemicals with it. And every chemical, when it mixes with another chemical, it makes the water very carcinogenic. And I would think if you would do the right thing and you want to save these people's lives and their children, these things actually cause mutations, body parts missing, all kinds of bad stuff, like the ones you see on the Shriner commercials. And this is why this needs to be taken care of. Is that if you're, you have this in the water already and then you're adding sodium fluoride, the poison from China to reduce cavities, they haven't figured out what they're going to tell what this one does. Or you want the people to vote? What are you voting for? Medicine? This isn't medicine. This is poison. And if anything, I would think that you, this council would do the right thing and protect the lives of the people who live in this city. And the biggest thing you can do is get water filters on those schools because they're drinking this stuff. And then you're adding more poison to it on top of that. There is no reason, you've got every paper on fluoride. I've got more stuff. I even have a video about the propaganda on fluoride, which I would like you guys to play and look at. I was trying to send some things and somehow I couldn't get through to the city clerk. My emails weren't going through. And I'm going to try again, but I'm going to show you every video and everything from doctors that tell you to drink sodium fluoride from China as a hazardous waste product. We're drinking their air pollution to reduce cavities. And after 50 years, I have six books on fluoride, if any one of you would like to read it. But I think the most important book you need to read is The Fluoride Deception by Christopher Bryson. I gave that to Jackie Speer and now Jackie Speer has breast cancer. And she is the one who decided to fluoridate the rest of California. And I was so happy when she gets cancer because you know what? The people that do this to us deserve to have it because it's a horrible way. And you know one thing they put in the water?
Thank you for your comments.
Well, they put gas as your chemotherapy. How's that?
Thank you for your comments and the information on the polyfluoral alkalis. Next up, Steve Marash on the Air Park, I believe the rest of our Air Park now? Or no, I'm sorry. Sharon, Sharon, you're up. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I apologize for the yellow pieces of paper that I gave to to the mayor to pass out to each of you. Even presidents of senior center group forgets to buy copy paper occasionally. So, so you got it on yellow paper instead of white. Marcus McDaniel is the publisher of the Battleground and Hawkinson Greet magazine. The Greet magazine is allowed one donated ad for a nonprofit each year. He chose us, the Battleground senior citizens, for that opportunity this year. And we're always looking for ways to highlight the city of Battleground as well as the seniors and their involvement in this community. And I wanted to show you, I didn't think there was any better way to do that with this latest edition that you have in your hand here that was featured with the city hall on the cover. So I thank all of you very much. The Battleground senior citizens had their luncheon on the second Monday of every month. We'd like to see you there sometime. Keep in mind, 50 years of age or older, you're considered a senior by the Articles of Incorporation of our group. Thank you.
I liked everything you said, but that last part. That one hits a little too close to home. Steve Marash, you are up. Apologize for that. The rest of the comments are on the Air Park.
It's supposed to be on the Rasmussen DEA and the Air Park rezoning, which are both
Okay, that's fine.
I don't have any citizen congress.
Oh, we don't have a public hearing. So if you wanted to comment.
It was listed on
Oh, on the, on the, okay. You had Air Park on there. So that's why I said, okay, that's fine. Yeah, we'll call you up for the Rasmussen.
Is the airport going to be a public hearing or are they taking?
No. If you have comments on the Air Park now would be the time.
Oh, all right. Well, I'll give you my comments now then. I'm Steve Marash, an attorney with Landerholm, a law firm in Vancouver. And I represent Premier Investments, who is under contract to purchase a couple of the large undeveloped properties that are in the Air Park zoning and I submitted a letter today and I wanted to apologize for submitting it today and not submitting it sooner. I was camping with my family last week when the letter from Miller Nash came in. And the reason for my letter is to respond to the August 12th Miller Nash letter. I got back this morning and I saw that. So I put together a quick response and submitted it to our new city manager. So hopefully it gets distributed to you. I can briefly summarize. I basically made two points, well, three points in that letter. The first is that we support the Planning Commission's unanimous 4-0 recommendation to rezone the Air Park to low-density residential comp plan designation and an R3 low-density zoning. We believe that that is better for the city because with a two and a half acre minimum lot size, I mean, that's only the very wealthy who are going to be able to afford a two and a half acre lot if these properties that my client has under contract get redeveloped. But at a three unit per acre, I mean, that's almost eight times the density. The lots will be a lot more affordable to people. And so I cited in the letter the city's 2021 Housing Action Plan and the the purpose of that plan to do selective rezonings in order to, you know, provide for more affordable housing. In, in the letter from Miller Nash, Miller Nash argued that there were these new covenants that were adopted that imposed a two and a half acre limit. So the city couldn't change the zoning anyway. And I cited case law in my letter that says that you can't adopt an amendment to a set of covenants that adds a new restriction, like a new minimum lot size without unanimous consent. That's the Chihuahua case from the Washington Supreme Court of 2014. So we believe the new CCNRs are invalid and we're probably going to be filing a challenge to those. But the city shouldn't even consider CCNRs when doing zoning analysis. You should consider the Growth Management Act and the city's comprehensive plan. So the second point made in the Miller Nash letter was this airport was a quote essential public facility. Well, it can't be an essential public facility because it doesn't have adequate facilities to serve the public. There's no tie-downs for airplanes. There are no fueling stations. So there's really no way the general public can come in and and use that airport in any reasonable way. And I cited the Homeward Bound or the Homebound case in my letter that basically says that to be an essential public facility, it has to serve the common good, which this airport only serves the neighborhood. So for those reasons, we request you reject the Miller Nash letter and approve the zone change. And my time has run out. I will end it there unless there are questions. Thank you very much.
There will be no questions. Thank you, sir. Next up, Dennis Coats.
Hey, Dennis Coats, 38-year Battleground address. They're just outside the city. I am a pilot. I use Cedars North on a regular basis. And I disagree with what's his name, that uh it's not an essential airport. Most small airports like this do not have fueling service. Uh, grass strips, it's a, it's a nightmare to put it in. Uh, we don't require fuel every time we land. So I use it on a regular basis. I think it's the essential to keep it here. It makes Battleground more livable. Uh, and it's not just used by the the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Kathy. And let's uh, let's try to keep, keep that to a minimum, please. Kathy McElire? I always butcher your last name. I apologize.
Hello again, and um I will address this to the mayor. And I wanted to say that I think we have some positive news on what you asked us to do sixty days ago. So sixty days ago, you asked us to get together and asked us to look at some expanded uses for the airpark. And over the last sixty days, a lot has happened. Um, and I'm going to talk about three basic things. Number one, um the homeowners have gotten together and they've expanded the use for the airport to include some additional uses, industrial uses, which were formerly um not allowed in the CCNRs. I wanted to remind the council that the R three zoning on the table, this is my second point, is not compatible with the airport. And if you all remember, David Eisen from the Washington State DOT provided a letter to all of you that details all of that out. And that it is in fact an essential use facility, and he provided you with all the documentation supporting that. And then the third thing I want to stress is the airpark does serve this community. And as evidenced by the standing room crowd we had a few meetings ago, um, you see a lot of people here today that are going to talk to a little bit about that fact. But uh, just to drill down a little bit on the first point, we spent um a lot of time working on solutions to protect the airpark while expanding the use to allow more compatible commercial uses within the existing airpark zone. There's no need to change the zone because the zone does allow for compatible uses and we can expand those uses. We followed a specified legal process. We hired a land use expert who's been involved with this airpark and airparks for twenty years. We paid for it, we funded the work. Um, we added those permitted uses. And then we met with the city planners. You asked us to do that, so we did it. We met with Chris and Sam and David Eisen. All of the members of the homeowners association, including Jeff Blumquist. And we had two things that we were unanimous on. Everyone in that meeting, and Chris can attest to this, agreed that we want to keep the airpark. The second thing that everybody agreed to was the best next step was to maintain that airpark zoning with expanded uses and to take some time to look at what that might be. So I feel like we made really big progress over the last sixty days and um had a lot of cooperation from everybody involved. I think I'll skip over the David Eisen part. You can read the letter again from me. Um, I guess the last thing I just want to say is that as city officials and elected officials, I've just asked you to hear all the voices in the room. And we have brought so many people in here to talk to you. We've brought young people that are learning to fly. We've brought teachers that are teaching people to fly. People like Dennis who've been flying for decades. So this isn't just about the one percent and five people that live at the airport. This is a really critical asset for the city. And we really want to keep it. And we're willing to work with you. And I feel like we've done a lot to prove that in the last sixty days. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, Jason, uh, Nerp Nero Wolf. I should be able to read Ben handwriting because I have it, but I'm Nern. I never would have got it.
Most people don't. Uh, my name is Jason Nemroff. I'm a full time flight instructor based out of Camas, that airport there. And I want to share a perspective that I think it's hard for the general community to have on an airport like this. So our society needs pilots, right? We all want the airlines. We want to be able to receive our packages quickly. The whole world likes to send their pilots to the United States to get training, right? There's a huge training industry in this country. As a major metropolitan area, there's a ton of flight training that happens here. Um, I mean, just north of the river, there are uh multiple large flight schools that are operating. You know, dozens of flights, flights every day. Um, it's required training for private pilots, commercial pilots and flight instructors to be trained on soft fields. So non paved surfaces. There are not a lot of options for us in this area to do that training. We have uh, there's a little grass strip in Vancouver. It is not long for this world. There's Cedars North, which is by far the most well maintained strip that we have available to us. There's Goheen, which is public use, but it's not suitable for training for students. Um, it's, I don't want to get into it, but it's not a place you can take a student for practice. Um, the only other option we have in this area is a private airport. It's called Daybreak. Um, we are authorized by the owners occasionally to do training there. But it's not a public airport. So that access can be taken at any time, right? That's not assured for us that we have that. And even if it was, even if we do get to keep that, um, the fewer airports that we have available to us, the more traffic there has to be at each of these airports. And it rapidly becomes a safety issue when you have um several aircraft from different flight schools, all training to, all trying to do the same training in the same place at the same time. So it really helps us to have more options available. Um, I also want to repeat the thing that people have been saying, that it does serve the greater community. And I know that that's a hard thing to see. But we have people from Sandy and Portland and Gresham and Vancouver and Battleground and Ridgefield that come from all over to our flight schools to do their training that's required for their career. And again, soft field, it's required training. Um, these people go and do this training at Cedars North. Um, I solo students very frequently at Cedars North. It's often the first airport these people are flying at by themselves. Because it's grass, which is a little bit more forgiving than pavement. Um, the other thing that's really nice about this airport is that there aren't houses right next to it, like Fly for Fun has. So if a student makes a mistake, it's not that much of a safety issue. It's a big field. As we let housing encroach on the airport environment, it's only a matter of time before that forces the airport to be shut down. And I know that that's not the concern right now, but it.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. All right, next up, we have, guys, please, please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. Chris Prentice.
How's it going? My name's Chris Prentice. I'm a pilot. I uh tie up my airplane at Cedars North, fly out of it daily. Um. No, right now, we're talking about doing what zoning of R three, right? Three homes per acre is what it sounds like. So, I don't know, I'm just going to run this by you guys if you've even thought about it yet, but have you thought about building airport infrastructure instead? Right now, we have a national hangar shortage across the country where hangars right now, a waitlist is five to seven years at every airport you pretty much go to. Uh, each hangar brings in about five hundred dollars a month. Um, Sears North, I live off Sears North, um, it's about sixteen hundred feet long with the possibility you could build about forty hangars per row, which would be about a hundred, a hundred and sixty hangars piece. Um, you could generate with just a hard um hangars a month, fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Not including if you guys built tie downs, anything like that, and brought in more airport um infrastructure. Fueling would bring in a few hundred, a thousand dollars a year as well. Um, the other thing I think about is Eaton Boulevard is packed all the time. Um, it takes me forty five minutes at three o'clock now to go from my house to one seventeenth and five hundred. It's that packed. Uh, it's dead stopped, especially if schools in season. Um, you bring in another neighborhood along with a new one that we have, we already have a backup of traffic all the time. Um, the thing is about airport property, they're not dwelling there. They're coming in and out at their own, you know, leisure, bring their airplane out. Um, the thing that it would also do is bring people here more. Um, I know you guys don't know, because you're probably not in the general aviation world, but outside general aviation is a huge, or uh car travel is general aviation, huge amount of travel. Um, people are flying all over the place just to get a, what's called a hundred dollar hamburger. Because they'll spend the fuel to just go somewhere, go to a new town and go explore it. Um, if we actually had tie down areas, things like that, where right now, we do have two tie down areas, but it's at two people's houses at the moment. That's what we're doing. I and multiple other people have to tie down there every day because we still can't get hangars. I've been on a hangar list. I have one hangar in uh Vancouver, Washington. I have two airplanes. Uh, I was told seven years is the earliest I could get anything. Um, the amount of revenue that it generates for, say, the city of Vancouver and Camas is you know, a million dollars in revenue a year, just through hangars, not including the fuel services and things like that. I think what would make everyone happy is if you integrated some sort of growth for the airport and industrial to a point that it generates revenue for you guys, unlike taxes, you know, obviously, say sixty five hundred dollars a year average income tax per house or uh property tax per house. All right, you're probably about four or five hundred thousand a year for seventy five houses. Um, you'd actually generate more if you guys did hangars. So anyway, that's my idea, Brian.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, Patrick Townsend. I believe that's the last one I have signed up. Oh, we have one more. Okay, sorry.
Uh, good evening. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I apologize. Um, uh, this is in regards to Cedars North. I fly in and out of there quite a bit. Um, private pilot. Um, there has to be some sort of compromise in the zoning laws. You cram a bunch of homes in there, it's going to end up closing the airport. And it's going to affect people that own homes on the airport. Um, if you were to keep it at two and a half acres, I'd be the first to sign up to build a house there. Um, and I know several people at work, Alaska Airlines that I worked for, that would do the same. Um, it is an essential part of the community. Aviation is an important part of the community. Um, but I just ask that you, before you vote, think about a compromise that keeps the airport open, please. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'd please state your name for the record.
My name is Bill Hewitt. I'm the applicant that started this whole process twenty months ago. Uh, thank you for the courtesy of allowing to speak to you. Uh, I have a comment about the staff report that was generated by Mr. Sam Crumpet. In the last paragraph where it says staff report summary, it says uh the sixty day airpark study committee to consider additional light industrial uses in the airpark district. As I recall, the motion, it was to allow the neighbors and the developers to see if they could do industrial. There was no comment or no motion that said, we're going to try to preserve the airpark zone, so find out how we integrate industrial uses in that. Now, I I may be mistaken, but I believe that was the case. The neighbors used the sixty day window to put together a homeowners association and pass new covenants, which you heard from Steve Marash, are burgeoning on being illegal, if not illegal. So they don't have, I guess, a lot of uh interest in pursuing the industrial zone, even though the last one said there has to be a compromise. We've been in the process over twenty months now to utilize the property. And I would request that the city council approve the planning commission's recommendations for a comprehensive plan change to residential and zone the park air uh R three, so we can get on about this. The R three does not jeopardize continued use of the airport facility. That will only be jeopardized when the neighbors decide they don't want it to be there anymore. So I'll be here when we get to the item, if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lee, do we have any members uh of the public on Zoom that wish to comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sure, one last one before we're closing it up.
Sorry, my name is Neil Kahoon. I live in Camas. I'm Air Force retired. I'm Delta Airlines retired. And in my retirement today, I give primary flight training in my nineteen forty six Piper J three Cub. I use Cedars North Airpark in a training environment and would not want to see it encroached upon such that it would threaten its continued existence. I bring students here to experience a literal grassroots flying environment. That makes it an essential public facility to me by users that are maybe not within the city limits. Many years ago, a group of aviation enthusiasts created this airpark and as growth and encroachment um occurs, those legacy property owners' dreams are threatened by incompatible land use zoning. Incompatible land use, from whose perspective? These property owners deserve to be respected by not threatening their land use with zoning that's incompatible with their original desires. High density housing is not compatible with an airpark. I hope to be able to continue access this gem for my flight students and their students for years to come. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this moves us on to the uh consent agenda. More items on the consent agenda. If any member sees a reason to uh remove one, now would be the time.
Motion to approve the consent agenda and it's signed entirety as presented.
Motion by council member Ferrer, second by council member Cortez. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, we start our public hearings. Uh, these also are three minute time limits. Uh, but let's start off with a a presentation, uh, Mr. Hirsick on ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one, the Mill Creek subdivision development agreement.
Uh, so at the, good evening, council. At the last two meetings, we've talked about all of these upcoming development agreements. Um, one addition for Mill Creek is we did confirm that the uh price in the, in the plan for the road segment um is adequate, so um approving that piece of it won't change the traffic impact fee. Um, but other than that, um, there were no questions and I don't have anything else to add, so I'd recommend we go to the public hearing.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing at seven fifty four P M. For public testimony, individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comment on ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one, adopting the Mill Creek subdivision development agreement. All comments should be directed to the mayor. Do we have any members on Zoom, public members on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody in attendance that wishes to chime in on? Thanks. Seeing none, uh, we will go, seeing no further members but wish to speak, we'll now close the public hearing at seven fifty five. And open it to the floor for council for discussion or motions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero one, Mill Creek subdivision development agreement as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Cortez, a second by council member Overholzer. Any other discussion? Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Mr. Mayor, um. Did we get this stuff figured out on the roundabout?
Um, I met with Mark and Nikki this morning. Um, there, there's still some discussion to be had, so um, we're won't want to have more discussions with them, but they're not opposed to this developer agreement for that piece of it. But yeah, further can further conversation needs to be had related to that.
Thank you, Ms.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, for the roundabout, my biggest concern is um just wanting to make sure that we are going to have a roundabout that will fit in like our average fifty three foot trailers.
Yeah, so the um, they're falling under Washdott's design standards and the the traffic that's used will accommodate that size of vehicle. So it'll accommodate all the semis and the various vehicles that use it. So that's all kind of part of the standard design.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry.
City clerk needs to read the ordinance.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you do. Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty twenty four oh one, an ordinance adopting a development agreement between the city of Battleground and H two Mill Creek LLC.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Mr. Hirsick's going to inform us on ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero four, Rasmussen. Next up, Mr. Hersick's gonna inform us on ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero four, Rasmussen Commercial Center Development Agreement.
Yeah, so this one's related to the Rasmussen Commercial Center, uh, which is a southeast, southeast corner of Rasmussen and five oh three. Um, again, there were no questions on this one, so I don't have anything further to add.
And do we have anybody online? Oh, well, we'll, we'll open the public here in a second. Uh, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at seven fifty-eight P M for public testimony. Individuals are limited to three minutes. Right comment on number twenty twenty-four dash zero four, adopting the Rasmussen Commercial Center Development Agreement. All comments should be directed to the mayor.
Uh, good evening again. Steve Marash from Landerholm, and I represent the developer. And the only comment I have is I wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Hersick for his hard work on this development agreement and encouraged the city council to approve it, and I am available if there are any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have anybody online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And anybody in the audience? Nobody further. With that said, um, I will, uh, seeing no further members of public wish to speak, I will now close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine P M. And open the floor to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero four, Rasmussen Commercial Center Development Agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cortez, second by Councilmember DeRochers. Any further discussion? And if we would read the ordinance.
Ordinance. Ordinance number twenty tw- twenty twenty-four oh four. An ordinance adopting a development agreement between the city of Battleground and C M K Investments LLC.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And moving along to ordinance twenty twenty-four, Commercial Industrial Park Development Agreement. Mr. Hersick again.
Yep, so this one is for Commerce Industrial Park, which is over on Eaton, just east of Commerce. Uh, it's an industrial subdivision, and they'll build essentially what's an extension of a hundred and fifty-second or twentieth avenue. Um, and again, there were no questions, so I don't have anything else to add and recommend we go to public hearing.
Okay, we'll now open the public hearing at eight P M for public testimony. Individuals are limited to three minutes. Right comment on ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, adopting the Commerce Industrial Park Development Agreement. All comments should be directed to the city mayor. Anybody in attendance that wishes to comment? And anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, seeing no further members of the public wish to speak, we'll close the hearing at eight oh one P M. And I'll open the floor to council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, Commerce Industrial Park Development Agreement as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Cortez, a second by Councilmember Ferrer. If we could read the title, please?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh seven. An ordinance adopting a development agreement between the city of Battleground and Commerce Industrial Park LLC.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance carries. And finally, I believe this is the last one, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, West Main Commons Development Agreement.
Yep, so this one's for West Main Commons. Uh, it's a mixed residential commercial project, uh, south of Main Street between fifteenth and twelfth. Um, again, no questions, so I don't have anything else to add and recommend public hearing.
I will now open the public hearing at eight oh two P M. For public testimony, individuals are limited to three minutes. Right comment on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, adopting the West Main Commons Development Agreement. All comments should be directed to the city mayor. Anybody in attendance that wishes to comment? Anybody online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at eight oh two P M. And open the floor to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Um, for clarification, this road, is it going from south, I was trying to look at the map real closely, southwest first through southwest fifteenth or southwest twelfth? What, where is this little road pushing through?
Yeah, if you go down fifteenth avenue, right behind the hotel is First Street.
Yes.
So this will extend it to the east to, it won't quite go all the way to twelfth avenue, but it'll essentially go to the east side of this particular development's property.
And the benefit of that, it's pushing through, but where's the benefit that we're getting to give them credits? I'm sorry, I can see all the other ones, the beneficial to the city, but this small little area, why would that be good in a developer's agreement?
So this one is already TIF creditable. All it's doing is adjusting to market conditions. Um, the reason this one's TIF creditable is ultimately it gets over to twelfth avenue, which used to have a signal, um, but that got taken away to right in, right out, so when it does ultimately make its way to twelfth, the people that live there, including the couple businesses, will be able to use first to get up to fifteenth, so they'll have a full access signal, so that's kind of the, the bigger benefit to the public.
Allow them to go east or west. Well, so I guess when I read this about the benefits to the city to award these credits, I, I'm, I don't see where that little bit is contributing to the infrastructure unless you're saying that that's going to be that big of a deal when we push it out to twelfth to get them out onto Main Street.
Yeah, again, I, it's hard to argue, you know, how big a benefit, but from my perspective, it, those people that did have full movement off of twelfth don't anymore because of that signal being removed. While this doesn't, because they're not, they don't all the, own all the property to twelfth avenue. Ultimately, it gets it closer to that, so if further development or a city project ever comes along, it makes it that much easier to restore that full access.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, West Main, uh, Commons Development Agreement as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cortez and a second by Deputy Mayor Bowman. Does we have further discussion? Read the title, please.
Uh, I just, I have one more question. Mark, um, so that, that leg that it's tying off of onto First, right? That's that little spur behind the hotel?
Correct.
It's currently there. It's got some houses down on the end or whatever.
Yeah, so it's, you've got the hotel, then you got the spur for, you know, and then there's the empty land west of it. It's like the, um, ace and the vet clinic, and then on the right, um, was Mr. Ryan's house, which is now becoming the West Main Commons, which will be apartments on the south side and then commercial on the north side.
So that, that little spur, is that a full width road or is that one and a half or?
Uh, it's full width.
Full width.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh nine, an ordinance adopting a development agreement between the city of Battleground and D D W M C LLC.
Hey, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes six to one. Okay, this brings us into the business section of the meeting. Uh, looks like we have, uh, a budget amendment coming up.
Evening, council. Before you, you have ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, budget amendment to amend the twenty twenty-four budget, and I'm available for any questions about any of the items listed in the amendment.
Okay. Oh, hold on, let me. There we go. Let me utilize the software. Uh, five thousand dollars for the, the puppy? Is that what I see in there?
Yes, I will let Mr. Flynn answer those questions.
Yes, we, uh, there's some ancillary costs. Uh, we're hoping, uh, uh, I misspoke. I said his name was Frederick. Uh, that's not, that's not correct. His name is Rafferty. Um, there's a couple of things. One of the things, it's fifteen hundred dollars-ish, fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars. It's something they install in the car in case the dog's ever put in the car, um, that if the temperature got too high, it would have sounded alarm, drop the windows, uh, kennel. Uh, th- those type of ancillary costs is what we're anticipating.
Did I hear that, um, and this could be hearsay, was food donated from an outside person?
There have been, uh, at least two different outside companies that express their interest of wanting to help. Uh, waiting to, till we get the dog to begin having those conversations, but so far we've had a lot of support.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to confirm that we reached out, uh, on the Truenarc, uh, that, uh, some of the scuttlebutt we heard about the effectiveness of that?
Yes, sir.
Was still okay with it?
This afternoon, uh, and I have emails from, uh, both the county undersheriff and the county, uh, chief civil deputy. They have expressed, uh, uh, how well it has been going for both of them, and I even found, uh, a letter from a criminal defense attorney in Arizona that, uh, remarked it, how good it was, so I, I believe so, sir.
Appreciate it. I, I thank you for reaching out. I just heard some from somebody else that, so they were having some issues with it, so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Any other discussion on this budget amendment? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on ordinance to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, budget amendment as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Cortez, second by Councilmember DeRochers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget amendment ordinance passes unanimously. Now brings us to the parks master plan.
Mr. Mayor, this is the clerk. The ordinance, uh, title was not read.
I'm sorry. My fault. I will let you read it. I need to write that in my notes.
Somebody must have missed that. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four oh eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Batt- of Battleground, Washington, amending the city's twenty twenty-four budget, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one eight.
Would you like us to re-vote?
I don't believe that is necessary.
All right, now we're on to the parks master plan.
Good evening, council, interested citizens. We are toward the end of our parks master planning process. This included four properties throughout town. Derkey, Gardner Oaks, Remy, and Fairgrounds. Uh, the, uh, we have the consultants here, uh, remotely who will be giving a presentation, uh, Justin and Matthew with M I G, uh, and Renee as well, and we also have Mike Abate with Abate Design that will be available for questions. We did find some cost savings through this process. Our consultants are still tasked with looking at some properties for sports ballfields, so I don't have that to present to you this evening, but that will follow when that process is finished up. So I will turn it over to our consultants to share their slides, the, give an overview of the process and the final designs.
All right, uh, thank you. This is Justin Martin with M I G. Can folks hear me okay? All right. Great, and I think you can see my screen hopefully. Um, yeah, once again, thanks for your time this evening. Um, we'll, we're just gonna run through, um, the, the master plans. Um, we'll start with kind of an overview of the process to date, uh, and then, uh, I'll turn it over to my colleague, uh, landscape architect Matthew McCurry, who will just, um, kind of, uh, give an, uh, an overview of the, the final master plan concept for each of the four sites. All right, so, um, as I mentioned, just running through this, um, all, and then lastly, looking for your approval, as Sam said, uh, of, of the final, uh, adopting the final master plans for each of the sites. Great, so, yeah, just a, a quick overview, a- again, uh, the four park sites, uh, or future park sites that we're, we've been tasked to look at, were Remy, uh, property, uh, Gardner Oaks, the Fairgrounds Park Site, and Derkey. Remy Property, uh, we're primarily looking at the, kind of the south end of the site. Uh, most of it's already occupied by a wetland mitigation bank, uh, Gardner Oaks, um, most of the sites available. Um, Fairgrounds, we're primarily looking at, um, opportunities to redevelop the north end of the site. And Derkey, uh, looking at the, uh, plan for the entire property. Um, so the scope again is to, at, at this point, the master plan is developing the overall theme, identifying key program elements, um, identifying site constraints, uh, such as environmental constraints, uh, topography, um, and, and whatnot, and uh, just laying out the kind of preferred locations for all of these, uh, kind of, uh, preferred elements and amenities in, in each of the parks. This helps guide the future, future design, um, and development of each site. Um, at the end of this process, the, uh, city staff will, uh, you know, work to determine which one gets moves ahead next, um, and, uh, look for funding and then, uh, work to refine each of these master plans into specific designs, um, and also bring those in line with the whatever funding is available for each site. Um, just a quick overview or review of the process, we're basically, um, at the, the end here, um, we've, we've had, uh, two major outreach, um, uh, opportunities or, or, um, touches within the process here, and, um, again, develop the final concept plans, and then tonight, um, just looking for those approvals of those. Um, so I think obviously that getting public input is one of the big keys about, um, on, on developing these sorts of plans. Um, you know, these are for the community and um, really figuring out what people need and what they want in their parks as the city grows and develops. Um, so our first open house we had, uh, last, uh, fall, um, with the virtual open house extending into January, um, that identified some preferred concept options out of, uh, several, uh, uh, two to three, uh, proposed for each site. And that was followed with a planning commission and, and, uh, parks, um, or pace board, uh, meeting, um, that confirmed some of those, uh, options that, that, um, they wanted to move forward with. Uh, so for Remy, it was this Wellness Adventure, Gardner Oaks, Nature Grove. Um, Fairgrounds, there was both concepts that we presented, um, were supported to some degree, um, but there was concern about making sure the ballfields remained available somewhere. Um, excuse me, and with their Derkey property, um, uh, there was interest in both, uh, the nature connection as well as the sports field concept, um, but a- again, concerned that the sports park was maybe not, uh, in line with the dinner's intent. So, um, we came to you, uh, last, back in February of this year, um, and the council, uh, confirmed, uh, the concepts, um, Wellness Adventure and Nature Grove for Remy and Gardner Oaks, uh, respectively. You'd like to play through the ages concept, and that's what we, uh, moved forward with in terms of, uh, developing for the final master plan. And, uh, we were asked at that point to move forward with a sports center concept for Derkey. So, uh, we developed those, those, uh, concepts and came back to the community with one concept for each site in May. Feedback was generally supportive of the, the, um, concepts presented, um, with the exception that there was, um, a number of folks that turned out, um, asking to, to reconsider Derkey and, um, strong preference at that meeting for the, um, the nature connection or strong preference at that meeting for the um, the nature connection or kind of more of a natural park concept theme for the, the Derkey site. That same evening, we had a, a planning commission and pace board uh, briefing. And which affirmed as those two concepts for Remy and Gardner Oaks. People liked this fairgrounds redevelopment, um, and prefered to just have it a single phase at this point. Um, but assuming that that would not move forward until there was uh, a, a relocated uh, location for the ball fields that are there now, the north end. And then based on the public feedback, um, the, the planning commission and pace board also recommended uh, moving ahead with um, not moving ahead with the sports center. Uh, I believe Sam came to, to city council in May specifically to, to check back in on the Derkey property. And um, the, the feedback at that point was that um, we should go ahead and move ahead with the, the more uh, the, the nature connection. Concept for, for Derkey. Assuming uh, as Sam said, that, that the city would look for other s- spots for um, sports parks and as, or sports park or ball field facility within the city. And so I will note that that's uh, as Sam mentioned, we're currently um, underway with that, um, and so we intend to be providing some preliminary look at that. Um, within the next couple of months as well as, as we're finalizing our report on the master plans. So at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to, to Matthew, um, who's gonna just run through the um, an, an overview of each of the, the foresight concepts.
Thank you, Justin.
Sure. Um, one second. There we go.
Thank you. So the first site we'll discuss is the Remy property. Um, so this area is uh, is bordered on the south by southwest Scotten Way. And on the west by southwest twentieth avenue.
We have you get a little bit closer to the mic.
Oh, yep, sorry about that. Now on the east by southwest thirteenth avenue and the retail area that includes Walmart. And although the uh, site is eighty acres, approximately four and a half acres can be developed because of the existing conditions. So this master plan includes uh, gathering spaces, which includes uh, accessible picnic spaces and restrooms. Uh, there's active recreation and fitness, uh, which is uh, included uh, uh, fitness stations and a pump track. The inclusive play elements um, include sand and water play, uh, as well as elevated play features for views into that existing habitat bank. There's also areas for table games and cornhole. The flexible open space areas uh, include lawn areas for picnicking and uh, recreation. Uh, for example, uh, the central lawn area could be used for a small soccer field. Uh, in addition, there is a dog park with fenced areas for big and small pets. The natural areas include an accessible bird line for views into the habitat bank, as well as trails with views into the habitat bank and wetlands. And enhanced planting for adjacent to the wetlands and around the park. And access and circulation components include trails and paths. This includes um, extending the existing path uh, between southwest twentieth avenue and southwest thirteenth avenue, as well as providing connections to the existing sidewalk on Scotten Way. And providing uh, neighborhood connections and a variety of walking loops. Parking is provided with the centrally located parking lot, approximately uh, twenty-five parking spots. And a small west side parking lot um, uh, is approximately six parking spots. Next. Thank you. And the planning level cost is uh, nine point four million plus soft costs. And some of the key cost elements of the design include plantings and irrigation, uh, play equipment, uh, covered picnic shelter and restroom, uh, paving, parking lots and utilities. And I'll just note on this slide, uh, images on this slide and uh, subsequent slides are included to represent some of the key proposed improvements for each plan. Next. Uh, the second site we'll discuss is the Gardner Oaks property, and this is bordered on the west by southwest tenth avenue. And the retail area that includes Walmart, just on the other side of uh, the Remy property. Uh, bordered on the north by a planned development and on the east and south by a single family residential. Uh, the site is thirteen acres, but similar to Remy, it's approximately two acres can be developed because of the existing conditions. And the master plan includes uh, gathering spaces, uh, which is, includes a picnic pavilion, picnic spaces and ref- uh, restaurants that are adjacent to the existing oak trees. Active recreation and fitness components include a nine-hole disc golf course. And inclusive play elements include uh, nature play building and elevated climbing structure. Uh, flexible open space components include lawn areas for picnicking and recreation. And the natural features include uh, widening the drainage channel and providing uh, channel crossings and an overlook, as well as providing trail through the wetland areas, uh, and enhancing the site with restoration plantings, as well as preserving the native oak trees and woodland. Uh, access, circulation components include accessible pathways, bridge crossings and an overlook, uh, providing neighborhood and regional trail connecting and a parking lot with approximately twenty-five spots. Next. And the planning level cost is seven point seven million plus soft cost. Some of the key cost elements of this design include plantings and irrigation, play equipment, bridges, covered picnic shelter and restroom, paving, parking lot and utility. Next. Thank you. Uh, the third site we will discuss is the Fairgrounds Park Site. And this is uh, bordered on the west by an existing uh, railroad and uh, northeast Graves Avenue. And on the east by northeast Fairgrounds Avenue and south by East Main Street. Uh, the site is eight point six acres with approximately five point six acres that can be developed. And this master plan includes gathering spaces, which includes the large closet for table games, flexible seating, covered picnic pavilion and restrooms. And active recreation and fitness components include sport courts for basketball and tennis or, or pickleball. Uh, fitness stations and a pump track that's surrounded by large shade trees. Inclusive play elements include an interactive water feature, splash pad, as well as active and elevated play features for various age groups. And the flexible open space components include lawn areas for picnicking and recreation and bermed planting around the play and sport court areas. Natural features include preserving the existing oak grove, and the new elements include uh, adding an arboretum with demonstration, uh, demonstration planting areas, uh, providing shade trees and the enhanced closet and adding all season plantings throughout the park. Access and circulation components include um, accessible pathways, neighborhood and regional trail connections and an additional parking lot with approximately twenty-five spots. Next. Thank you. And the planning level cost is fifteen point one million plus soft cost. Some of the key cost elements of the design include plantings and irrigation, play equipment, uh, water play and spray park, multiple covered picnic shelters and restrooms, paving, parking lot and utilities. Next. And the fourth site we will discuss is the Derkey property. Uh, this site is located two miles east from the city center. The site is ordered on the west, north and east by residences. And on the south by northeast two nineteenth street. The site is thirty-five acres with approximately twenty-two acres that can be developed. This master plan includes gathering spaces, uh, such as a trailhead and kiosk, four viewpoints that are along the perimeter trail and a forest labyrinth. And the inclusive play elements include a nature themed playground, which is adjacent to the perimeter trail. And the natural features include a perimeter trail with viewpoints into the existing tree canopy and wetland, as well as providing an enhanced planting buffer along the edge of the park boundary and prairie restoration planting areas within the park. Access and circulation components include a perimeter trail and a parking lot, approximately twenty-five spots. Next. Thank you. Uh, the planning level cost is three point nine million plus soft cost. Some of the key cost elements of the design include paving, primarily gravel for the trails and asphalt for the parking lot, uh, play equipment and visitor features and restoration vegetation and utilities. Next. And this concludes our presentation.
Thanks, Matthew, and yeah, we'd love to just open it up for comments or questions.
Council? It's Cortez, Councilmember Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I appreciate the presentation that you gave to us. Uh, I guess uh, the selfish part of me wishes that uh, we had uh, some sports, multi-purpose sports fields uh, in, in terms of one of the options that was uh, presented to us. Cause we know the community is desperately um, uh, wanting uh, that. Um, and so I'm sure that'll be a discussion we have for the future. Uh, my only quick question was um, on all of the items that were presented, uh, looks like there was parking that was provided there, and I just wanted to make sure that we're planning uh, appropriately. Uh, in your um, in your plans, do you have any um, uh, allocations for like EV charging stations, like maybe one or two EV charging stations per uh, per uh, planned site?
Um, we, we hadn't gotten to that level of detail um, in the parking, but I, I certainly agree that might be a, a good idea at at least some of these parks. I mean, I think we're seeing more and more public facilities going in with those stations. Um, you know, I, I worked on another project where we did recently install those with some park improvements at a, a Washington State Park. And you know, I, I would say it's certainly, you know, feasible and, and um, obviously it'll add some cost. I don't think it would be significant um, in terms of the overall uh, improvement cost. But that'd be sort of some, something certainly worth considering. We can mention that in our report um, to consider that in the future. And um, you know, as each park moves forward, that'll be the kind of detail that I think would be helpful to, to address at each one.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'd appreciate if you did include that in there. So, thank you.
Councilmember Overholser?
Uh, yeah, to, thank you, uh, to echo uh, Councilmember Cortez. Thank you to M I G and everybody that's put in the hard work and the public for their feedback on all of the parks master plans. I have a question about Remy, kind of specifically, but um, and I know we're late into the planning game here, but I'd rather ask a question now than not getting the answer at all. Um, I love the idea of that park layout, but I would really like to see over on the, that would be our west side of town, uh, some additional sports or uh, basketball, specifically basketball courts. How hard would it be and cost wise, how much more would it cost or less? And I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but uh, to add one or two basketball courts in place of possibly the bike skills pump track area that then could be looked at in the future for the fairgrounds area. Is that a, is that a feasible thing? Is that a possible thing? And, and your professional estimation, what would be the cost difference on those?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, I, I think that's the kind of thing that would be great to consider, you know, m- moving forward in the next steps. Um, you know, the, the basketball, you know, one or two kind of s- small outdoor basketball courts, you know, I wouldn't say like, you know, full on like, you know, NBA size or whatever, but um, you know, the, the kind of size you typically find outside, uh, those would certainly fit, I think, within that area of the bike skills course, you know? Um, maybe there would be a way to kind of fit both in there. In terms of cost, I don't I don't think it would add significant cost, and it certainly um, if it was put in instead of the bike skills, um, that wouldn't, would not be a cost add. So yeah, I, I think it'd certainly be something that could be considered as an, kind of an alternative program element there in the future.
Thank you, Justin.
Councilmember Fur?
Uh, yeah, thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Overholser, cause that's exactly what was on my thought process was um, the Remy. My first question is, do we know what the sizes uh, allotted for that pump track?
I think it was about fifteen thousand square feet, fifteen to seventeen.
Okay, so, cause I, I have a gentleman who I know uh, personally, who does a lot of the biking, and he has a friend who he rides with, and um, he builds these pump tracks. So I asked him, you know, what is the minimum size that would be required to even think of, you know, creating something like this at this park? And he was saying you'd want a minimum of a half acre. And so I was thinking along the lines as um, Councilmember Overholser uh, possibly putting in a basketball court, because we do have some apartments living there. We're gonna have some more coming in there, and I couldn't think of any that we have on the west side of town that's actually in a park, a public park. I know we have schools surrounding the area, but an actual one in the public park like we do in the fairgrounds. Um, going away from that, unless somebody wants to tackle Remy, I do have something I'd like to address about the Derkey. Is that okay? To use that time? Okay. Um, so I, I love what you guys did for the most part with the Derkey. We're, we're, you know, we're on the right path, I think, with what the uh, what the request was for the property and using it that way. Um, one thing I always think about with public restrooms is bathrooms. Little kids, older people, number one thing older people ask me is where's the bathroom before they go anywhere? So they have to plan for a restroom break. And then obviously as a mother who's had little kids myself, you know, walking around, hot day, having a water, you can't plan for that bathroom break, and I would hate for us to be like, well, we didn't think about that. You're gonna have to drive your kids down to, you know, Main Street and use their restrooms down there. So I would love to, for us to see on that, maybe the second phase or whenever possible, um, opening some bathrooms. And maybe even looking at the play structure, cause it is gonna be requiring maintenance, maybe even talking about that on phase two, but the primary phase would be just, I think, parking and the path to get that open for our um, our citizens. And, and last, my other thing I had was um, the forest labyrinth. What is um, their? Yeah, um, that, that's not set in stone, right? Um, I'm thinking of some, maybe something, an alternative to the forest labyrinth. Um, I, I have no problem with the play structure looking like it's part of the natural scene. Um, and maybe, I mean, I've had kids myself. It doesn't take a lot, you know, for it to look natural and be inviting. Like maybe instead putting big boulders or um, little cutoff, you know, little trunks that the kids like to jump on in that circular area instead. And I'll ask this last part, under your cost summary, what type of bathrooms did you guys plan to use?
Um, I, I believe for this site, it was, it was um, like a, you know, just like a uh, C X T, you know, like a vault toilet, not a fully plumbed uh, restroom. There's, there's no sewer connection out there on the site, so.
On any, oh, I'm, I'm not just specifically that one, but all of your parks that, cause that one you didn't plan, I don't think, for a restroom that I saw. But you did for the other ones, like the Remy and the Oaks, and I was just wondering what kind of restrooms for those ones.
Yeah, so for Remy and Gardner Oaks, we, we planned and costed for a small restroom building. Um, you know, whether it's a prefabricated one building or just a simple um, you know, built on site building, um, either way, there would be, you know, actual plumbed restrooms with, you know, potable water and a sewer connection and so forth. Um, you know, and, and large enough to have, you know, either a men's and women's side or several um, kind of unisex or family uh, restroom.
Somewhere like a sink to wash hands too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and there was um, it, w- we also had like kind of a sand and water play area in the Remy site that was, that's in the plan and costed for, and that's envisioned, not, not like a spray park, but more like some kind of, you know, play tables, um, you know, some water feature, you know, like little uh, fountain spigot type things. And then more of a full spray park system at the, the fairground site. And particularly the spray park features, um, the state health department requires you to have a restroom in a certain proximity to those, so.
Thank you.
Captain Mayor.
I can um, I can address the uh, issue of the, of the labyrinth, um, if. If, Justin, can we go back to the, to the dirky, the plan for a second?
Yeah, just one sec here.
Yeah, that's perfect. So one of the interesting things in the area west of that sort of pinkish circle that says forest labyrinth is, if you've been to the site, there are lots and lots of trees that are planted sometimes three feet, four feet, and they're fir trees planted in tight rows. And those trees aren't healthy because they're so closely tied together. So the idea was kind of the opposite of most labyrinths where you go and construct and you add things was to actually create kind of a play space in amongst those trees that with, with the kind of a built-in structure already there. So it's mostly a question of removing trees and kind of patterns to make it a fun place for kids to discover and adults and, and wander around. And it was interesting, we had some pictures in the different public meetings and that was one of the elements that people seemed to really get kind of excited about because it's different than things that they'd seen in other parks. I don't know if that's helpful, but that was the thought.
Okay, so it's made out of the trees is what you're saying?
Right, it's, it's, it's made by removing some trees that are so closely packed together to create paths.
Okay, because the picture just looked like flat with
Yes.
little designs. Okay, I'm excited, I'm excited for that. Never mind, take that back.
Yeah, there's different, different options to, of how to create that or, you know, could be that people want, you know, some, I don't know, something different, but it's just a place to, you know, kind of a, a small destination along your way as you walk through the, the nature. That's kind of a natural theme.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the reason for the Parks Master Plan is so we can continue, we can collect park impact fees so that we can improve these parks or do parks, correct?
Correct. Well, and these are, these were part of the overall Parks Master Plan for designing. So you could pick pieces of these and use park impact fees to construct them.
Yes. So I just want to, I, I mean, most people don't care, but I'm going to give you a historical perspective. We've built no parks here since I've been on council in thirteen years. Okay, I'm on council because of a park being built and ripping out baseball fields. We have nothing on here for a sporting complex. So we will never collect a fee to, to start to build a sporting complex. Because it's not on our master plan. It's not on our parks plan. We got thirty-six point one million dollars worth of projects here. That I will bet you thirty-six million dollars of that will not be done in the next thirteen years. We've got a forty to fifty million dollar parallel Forest Main sewer line that's going to be coming up within the next ten years. So as we sit here, this is literally eighth grade, build your dream house. And let's design it. And what's going to happen is there's going to be a new council sitting here by the time we get to building a Remy project and that new council could say, I want a pump track. I want basketball courts. And, but what this allows us to do is it allows us to start to collect fees to improve these parks. And this, this was the problem, this came about from the visioning. This was the problem, and this is, this is what I brought up when we did the vision. No one asked, are you willing to pay for the things that you want? We, we asked everybody, what do you want? Everyone said, well, we want parks, we want open space, we want all this stuff. No one asked, are you willing to pay for it? Thirty-six point one million dollars. You know, that's, that's a lot, that's, that's a lot of money considering we barely put a million dollars into a park recently. So, so as I look at this and I look at fairgrounds and, and we're looking at Fairgrounds Park, that plan isn't going to mean anything without a sporting complex. Because there isn't one person on this council that's going to sit here and say, well, let's tear that out and put in a pump track and tell Little League, sorry about your bad luck. Not one person's going to sit here and say that. So that's my only concern is we pulled the sporting complex off a dirky. So we can't, we can't start collecting for the sporting complex because it's not part of our Parks Master Plan. Am I correct on that?
No. So this, these are the design plans for those parks that are in here. The plan you guys approved, I think it was two years ago, the overall that had the list. That is the plan that needs to be amended to add the sports complex to collect fees specific to that type of park. There's a regional park that's included in there. And I believe Mark is going to bring that back later on this year to add that back to it, but that is not part of these plans. These plans are specific to these individual parks that you can use PIF for these individual items, but it's not what's making you be able to collect the fee.
So we already have all of this on our plan to collect the fee. So this is literally, I'm just designing my house that I want. I'm buying, I, I want a Ferrari. And so I'm going to, you know, and I, I mean, it just, I appreciate we're looking at this. We need open space, we need parks, we need that stuff. But, but from a council standpoint, guys, th- this is going to be long past us when people are making the decision what to put in that park. Because it's just, there's no money for parks. There, but that's what people want. And without doing, without us being willing to bond and without us being willing to do something like that, some type of a parks bond or levy. And, and which, which we have to do this to do that, to put that out and say, this, this is what we're going to do. But it's, it's literally, you know, the design of it is just kind of, this is what'll fit there. By the way, those trees that you're talking about on the labyrinth, those were all planted by the county to use as a wetland mitigation bank. So those are not, those trees are not anything that was there that have any historical perspective except the county planted them and didn't want to water them. So that's why they're there. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as I look at this, I was asked to review and approve as council who's sitting here now. So I feel it is important that I say that I have a liking of what Councilmember Overholser said as far as replace the bike park with the basketball and move that over to the fairgrounds. I mean, this is our wish list. This is what we're saying. This is our time to say what we'd like as a sitting council now. So I just would like to put my vote in there as well for adding basketball to Remy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'll round out the, the first round through. So I do want some clarification on the fee because I believe when this came back, it was mentioned by this council that we weren't too enthused by the pump track at Remy. So the difference between collecting the fee and spending the fee, Megan or Chris, this allows us obviously to collect park impact fees. Do we need, if council so desires, to not have a pump track at Remy? Do we need to amend that before we approve it? Or is it just a generic blueprint? And it, it doesn't matter, the individual components, it will be designed and finalized if and when we ever Santa Claus ever comes.
Correct. So in the, oh, it's very confusing because they're both called master plans, right? So you have the Parks Facility Plan that you approved before, that's that big, long document with a list of projects and it has very generic names of parks in it. And within that was the design of these specific parks. These are those designs. So then it kind of trickles down. You're able to change that design because it rolls into the generic on the facility plan.
When do we, when do we change that design? Is this now the time to change that design or is it the next step?
It would be the next step. So these are generic plans. This is kind of a, as you said, your, your dream. This is what the landscape architecture looks like. And as you get to the actual build portion, that would be the time to then change it to be specific to the funding available and what council would like to see.
Okay, that's helpful because, yeah, I, I think council was pretty clear. I'm a little disappointed that the pump track was even in the Remy design, to be honest. I thought, I thought that was fairly clear. And even the, you know, if we want to save some money on irrigation, we could turn that small sports field into a sand volleyball court, but we're probably getting in the weeds there. I'm, I'm in full support of the basketball over there at Remy as well. And, and hopefully that could make it in. But my, my biggest concern, and Deputy Mayor Bowman kind of hit on it, the, the bad part about going last is everybody has all the, all the good points, thirty-six point one million dollars. And that's before a sports field complex, which is what, twenty-five? Is there any city plan on, is there any will among the people? Are we going to talk to our citizens from a city perspective or is this something you're wanting council to, to talk to our neighbors and find out what's?
The, the city's parks plan as adopted definitely calls out ballfield needs. That's in there. So our consultants right now are tasked with looking at a few properties. If in the future we find one or two that we want to take a closer eye, closer look at, then we would go after a similar process like this, master planning and getting some cost estimates together and then figuring out how to pay for it.
My, the question was more the funding piece. As far as we have these plans now, is there a next step that includes workshopping that out or what's, what's, or does this just as go on a, a plan on the bookcase?
So right now we have two point seven million in park impact fees that we have collected it since that overall arching facility parks plan was implemented and that's what we've been collecting. And then from that, I think a survey needs to go out to the citizens, to your point of, are we willing to pay for a ballfield and go that route and reach out to our citizens? I think that's the next step. You could also have these options on there as well if these are more palatable to them or pieces. Like there's, there's a multitude of things that we can do. I think the next step, ask our citizens, what do you want? Are you willing to pay for it? How much are you willing to pay for it?
Yep, thank you.
I'll just add to you that having this kind of plan makes grants a lot easier to get. So it's not a bad thing.
No, I, I understand that. I, I just, there's, I, I don't want the, the impression that, oh, the city council just spent thirty-six point one million dollars and, and there's going to be a bunch of new parks, you know, next year. So I just don't want that impression out there. Yeah. So it's, it will be a long haul and it will take a, a lot of will to get there. Councilmember Cortez?
Yeah. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I spoke earlier, but everybody was generating such great ideas. I really appreciate that. I, I agree, the, the, the basketball, I'm on board. I think we should think about amending that and when we get to the appropriate time, but basketball court in there. I also think, and I agree with Deputy Mayor Bowman, that, you know, again, this will be a future council, but when the time comes, we need to make sure that we move forward on a multi-purpose sports field before we move forward on the Remy property.
Fairground, Remy, fairgrounds, excuse me, fairgrounds.
Because we need to make sure that a solution is provided before we take away those ballfields, right? And so I hope that, you know, whether that's some of us or a new council, that they have that foresight to do that. And hopefully the document, this master plan suggests that, right? Also too, again, these are kind of like perhaps in the weeds kind of stuff, but any facilities that we provide onsite, restrooms, we needed, we need to learn from our lessons like that have happened in not the skate park. Well, yeah, skate park, but what's the other? Quanis, yes. And how we've had quite a big difficulty with vandalism there and people not acting appropriate. So hopefully we're able to incorporate some restroom type facilities that discourage that, right? And so even, even if it requires us to pay a little bit more upfront, it's in the long term, it's going to probably help us. And then finally, and again, this is in the weeds type of stuff, but I was at a park in Spokane, what, about a year ago? And they had this wonderful park that has elements and features to it that help with individuals with disabilities and make it more accessible. So I hope we're able to incorporate elements of that into these park plans. I, I can't imagine that is going to blow the budget, if you will. So and, and then I guess in ending, hopefully we're able to find somebody in Olympia that understands what our community needs, so.
Okay, we're going through a second time. So any other further discussions, questions? Now would be the time. Councilmember Overholser?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the resolution number twenty-four dash zero nine Parks Master Plan as presented.
Say you. Council, Councilmember Overholser with the motion and Councilmember DeRochers with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll take, it's nine o'clock. Let's take a quick five minute break or it's eight fifty-four. We'll come back at nine oh five. Okay, I got nine oh five. Restart the meeting here. We have, uh, airpark district zoning considerations coming up next. Who's presenting that? Mr. Crummett?
Sure. Okay. Uh, I will just try to summarize the staff report real briefly. I know there's been a lot of testimony and a lot said on this process. I'll start with the last council meeting, June seventeenth. The council off, uh, allowed for an additional sixty days for the airpark steering committee to see if they could come to some kind of resolution and introduce more, uh, industrial or light industrial into this area. Uh, we successfully did not, were not able to get us the airpark steering committee back together. There was, um, essentially no response. However, uh, airpark property owners individually met many times outside of a city process. Uh, Mrs. McClure kind of summarized that meeting. I've also bulleted a few key takeaways from that meeting. Uh, staff has presented a third option, which is our recommended option, which would be uh, to allow for some additional time for the, the Lawson, the property owners representing the Lawson property, along with some of the airpark district property owners to look at introducing some additional intensive land uses within the airpark district. To, to balance the Lawson's property interest as well as the interest of compatibility with the airpark district. I think I'll kind of just pause there and see what questions council has at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, to interrupt, but at this point, due to the fact that I am, uh, I have a personal interest in this, I will ask to be recused at this time.
Alright. Thank you. Sorry. I should have allowed you to do that earlier. My fault. Uh, floor is open for questions or any clarifications? Is there more to the presentation, Sam, or are we just hoping for a discussion here on the, on the options on the table?
That's all I have to present at this time.
Okay.
I will add that our city attorney, uh, Ken Harper is with us tonight, who's also been looking at this also closely from a legal perspective.
Understood. Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't necessarily have, uh, any additional questions, uh, on this particular issue. I just want to thank everybody that came and has expressed interest in this. And it's a lot of, uh, a lot of passion when it comes to, uh, this particular, um, area. Uh, I know, uh, I don't, I'm not sure if many people know this, but actually I, I was a, uh, uh, was, is, whatever you want to frame it, a private pilot myself. Uh, before my eldest was born, I did my ground school out at Evergreen Airport. Uh, and I was actually the last group that did it before they shut down. Uh, and the daughter, uh, uh, closed the flight school and, uh, uh, ultimately ended up selling either chunks of it or all of it off, uh, which was pretty sad. But, uh, I remember, uh, taking off at Evergreen, uh, uh, airport there, uh, in my, uh, I learned how to fly in my Piper Cub. Uh, uh, at that airport. Um, and then when they shut that place down, I needed to continue to log my flight hours. And so I transferred over to Troutdale Airport. And, uh, I had did my first takeoff on a Cessna one seventy-two, which was, I thought it was the coolest thing. Uh, so, uh, I, I'm totally, I totally see, um, the, uh, perspective of the, uh, you know, private pilots and of the aviation industry. Uh, you know, I definitely see the value, uh, of, uh, this facility in our, our, uh, our community. I don't think anybody's suggesting that we do away with it by any means. So it's definitely not an easy issue, not an easy task for the seven of us up here to have to navigate, uh, all this information, all of these opinions, uh, that have been stated and trying to make the best decision for the community and for everybody involved. So. But nonetheless, I, I thank you for, uh, providing testimony, uh, over the, you know, past several months. So thank you.
Councilmember Overholzer?
Uh, yeah, uh, Ken, thank you for coming tonight. Um, I, I have two questions for two individuals. But Ken, I wanted to ask you first, if you would, um, your take on this whole situation? In a, in a, as much time as you need.
Can I phrase that question in a way that?
Yeah. Ken, what, what's your opinion of the three options that we have? And, uh, how does it legally affect us as a city?
Well, uh, Councilmember Overholzer, I'd be happy to address that. And what I say may lead to follow-up questions because it's an open-ended question. I, I know you appreciate that too. Uh, as far as the three options are concerned, I, I really think that council has a fair amount of discretion to, uh, decide how you would like to instruct staff to, uh, uh, to further a, a vision that is consistent with the existing, uh, comp plan and zoning designations or to direct staff to consider alternatives to those existing. So I think you've got a fair amount of discretion there. But what I think is really key to understand is that your discretion is limited by, uh, your existing planning document and your existing codes and the legal framework that governs making changes to those. And, and so my take on all of this is that we have to recognize that the airport exists. It is a general aviation facility. Uh, it is not a, uh, a, an airport in the sense that we may think of it, uh, but, uh, GMA does not exist solely to protect sort of recognize major airport infrastructure. And something like this landing strip and the limited tie downs that you've heard of tonight, nevertheless, uh, supports the, uh, the kind of training that we've heard about. It, it supports the, uh, the, the emergency use that we've heard about at the public hearing back several months ago. So for legal, uh, maneuvering purposes, we're, we're, we're limited by those GMA obligations to protect essential public facilities. There are certainly paths that can harmonize protecting public facilities with more intense development. Uh, you see airport facilities around the state where the FAA's prescribed conical surfaces are related to, uh, in, I mean, WSDOT has guidance documents on this where you can look up sort of recommendations for, uh, uh, density of non-airport uses in relationship to those surfaces. I'm not an expert on this, but, but I've seen a lot of studies and I've worked with some municipalities who have tried to implement compatible zoning in relationship to airparks, airports rather. The, uh, ends of the runway have very, very different considerations for compatibility as opposed to the, the surfaces uh, that extend, uh, from the ground, uh, uh, sort of, sort of, uh, uh, parallel to the runway. That's something that can be studied and looked at. Uh, the city hasn't tried to take the lead on doing that. Uh, but if council wants to see that kind of study advance, then the city's, uh, comp plan periodic update is open right now. Uh, discussing this with Mr. Crummett, I understand that the city could accept uh, an application to revise the comp plan, uh, and that would pave the way for revision to the zoning designation out there. But it would have to be supported by, uh, a, uh, an applicant. Uh, the city's effort to try to find consensus here, as I think all councilmembers have seen, uh, did not pay off. Uh, the consensus-based, uh, effort that the city undertook starting last fall really led to, uh, a series of stakeholder meetings that reached impasse. And as Sam reports, we're, we're still at impasse as far as those stakeholders coming to a, a single vision. I understand that progress has been made, but there hasn't been a, a, a net payoff. So if the city council wants to go in this direction, I, I think it'd be very important to indicate that the city is, uh, open for business as far as receiving and processing applications. And if the, uh, landowners out there, any particular landowner out there that has standing, wants to bring an application forward, uh, the city would process it as expeditiously as we could. So, you know, Councilmember Overholzer, I'm reluctant to sort of prioritize option one, two, or three. One, of course, is pretty self-explanatory. Uh, two and three to me are, are kind of, uh, uh, pretty, pretty close shades of gray. I mean, they're, they're different. Uh, but, uh, saying in three that we would maintain the airpark district designation, but allow for potentially new commercial or light industrial uses is, is really kind of a, uh, a, a subspecies of two. It just is one that has a little bit less process associated with it. Now, how far you could go with option three before you've essentially bled over into two, I don't know. I mean, that's an open question because the, the idea of, uh, introducing new commercial or light industrial uses is pretty attractive. But even that, we heard gentlemen speak tonight about hangars, for instance, uh, or other airside facilities. Even that still has to go through some level of compatibility review to be confident that, that it meets height limitations and, and, you know, all kinds of other things. So. I'll stop there. I guess I, I find that there to be, uh, uh, you know, a, a fair amount of options for council really to, to direct staff in two and three. But exactly where you come down on that is not a lawyer issue. So I want to steer clear of making any kind of veiled policy guidance. That's really not my role. Does that help at all, Councilmember?
Oh, yeah, it does very much. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate that. Uh, my second question is for Sam, or just pointing in your direction, I suppose, because your hands are on this right now. Um, are there any current applications on any plats or anything of that nature? On the airpark at all?
Yes, the Lawsons do have a plat application on hold in our office for a, uh, it's for a nine lot short plat together with a boundary line adjustment, which would kind of functionally look like a ten lot subdivision right along Eaton Boulevard there on their property.
And that's utilizing those twenty seven acres?
Correct.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Harper, would it suffice to say that, um, in your professional, your professional opinion was part of the staff recommendation to option three?
I'm sorry, Mayor, would you repeat the question?
Would you say that, uh, your professional or your experience in land use and knowing what the city council is trying to achieve would lead, led to, uh, the staff recommendation for option three?
Well, a- again, Mayor, I'm not trying to be coy, but I, I really do think that, uh, two and three are available. Uh, it's just two really takes a pretty serious. two really takes a pretty serious, I guess, planning level commitment to reevaluate a lot of things out there. I mean, it, it takes a pretty serious commitment, I think, by council that probably needs to be led by an applicant's wishes rather than sort of directed from council. And, and I guess what I'm suggesting is if, if we wanted to explore three as sort of the council's lead preference, and it turned out that the applicant really wanted to go broader than, than three, I think we should be open to that. And so there could be certainly an avenue here that opens up that starts to look like two, which is again, well, I kind of hate to vouch for one or the other, but I think it is fair to say, Mayor, that if, if the city council wants to have sort of a, a, a more restrained view, if the city council thinks that this should primarily be applicant-led, then three probably matches that the best of the options.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to make a motion to direct staff to pursue option three, maintaining the airpark's district designation while considering the introduction of new commercial or light industrial uses within the airpark district. Furthermore, staff should be instructed to report back to the council at either the first or second meeting in October of two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Cortez and a second by Councilmember Overholzer. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Bowman?
So if the applicant was to, if we're saying the first meeting in October, if the applicant was to come in and ask for a different zoning or different, different things, would that be enough time with the comp plan? Mid-cycle comp plan update?
You know, I would really have to defer to Sam in terms of timing. I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be around the bush. It's going to be a pretty heavy lift if the applicant desires significant increase in density in that area for residential purposes. I mean, not by no means am I saying that I think that is not compatible with our GMA obligations. I think it could be. But I just don't want to overstate that that's a, our understatement, more accurate. I don't want to understate that that's a, going to be a simple matter to, to push through. So the answer to your question, Councilmember Bowman, is yes, that could be done. The more precise answer is it depends a little bit on the timing and the constraints that we have over making that update, that periodic update cycle. So maybe that's a question that I should direct Sam.
Yeah, I could add on to that. The county, as of last week, asked the city and cities in Clark County for our growth alternatives. And I'll be sending that memo out to you along with the, the weekly report this week. Built within that, you know, we, the, the city is pretty clear of our expansions to the west, et cetera. We've kind of built also into our growth alternatives is this language that we need to do some more planning for housing. We don't exactly know what that might look like for some upzoning of certain areas. What, what I would do, and I, I think this would need to be done pretty quickly, within weeks or months, is I would need to be having conversations with the county that we, we might be changing some zoning or density within the airpark district and see how they'd respond to that. I think there's enough wiggle room right now that we could introduce some uses, but of course, the county would like that sooner rather than later to be a part of, I should, I guess, make it clear, we as the city are doing our kind of combining our environmental impact with the county along with several of, of the other small cities. And so this is, this would be the time, you know, this would be the time to get, get that in. I think we'd be okay if we came back in October and had some more specifics for the county. I'd share that. I, I would, you know, if, if, if there, if there could be a list of agreeable uses, I, I then, I think we could definitely get that within periodic review.
Councilmember DeRochers?
Yes, I have a clarifying question for Mr. Harper. When you were just talking about, I believe you said it was a review that the applicant could request, it's kind of uncertain if that review could possibly suggest higher density than R three. So if they did decide to do that, it could end up with higher density housing, right?
They could, Councilmember. Yeah, the, I mean, at this point, one thing that I think is, is, is positive is both the, sort of the airpark direct stakeholders and, and, and Mr. Hewitt and, and his folks, they all have good legal counsel. And so, yes, they, they could make an application that could support even greater density than, than, than we might imagine based on, on the prior record. It's just a, really a, sort of an applicant's business choice in terms of whether or not they think the market would support the kind of investment in pursuing that approval because it's going to be a difficult application by having to handle all the compatibility issues if you want particularly high density. But that's not to say it can't be done. There are airports all around the state where, where you will see more density in, in different areas proximate to the, the airfield. So it can certainly be approvable if the applicant thinks there's a business case to go down that path, then the city would certainly welcome the application and process it. Whether it would receive a favorable recommendation, whether the council would support it, those are all to be determined. Now, I think the limitation though, is if the applicant wants that to be folded into the periodic update, then the timing constraints that Sam has pointed out become fairly important. If the applicant wants to pursue this as an applicant-initiated, applicant-sponsored, independent application, that's going to be difficult now because we are in this update process, but it certainly could be applied. We don't have a moratorium on, on application. So it, it could come in. I just, you know, again, we're going to be limited by GMA because GMA says we've got to consider all these applications concurrently. There's just lots of little, little wrinkles to that. But I just, I guess I just want to make sure that, that councilmembers understand that the city by no means wants to suggest that options are, are off the table or that, that the developer's wishes are constrained. I mean, they can support an application and we will process it.
Thank you.
Before we go through a second time, are you, are you good? Okay. Councilmember Overholzer?
Sorry. You know, we, we last discussed this sixty days ago about approximately and you know, we gave them sixty days to to, to make some moves with, on their end. By no means, I don't think it was an ultimatum, but kind of an urge, a ploy to the homeowners to kind of figure it out. I do believe that sixty days is not a long time when you're talking about everything that was done in that sixty days. So I do, I do want to applaud the homeowners in their efforts in, in what they were able to accomplish in sixty days. They, from talking with our city manager and her further meeting with all of you guys, Sam, I know was in attendance to that, that they were finding agreeances and common ground as, as owners. And I applaud you guys for that. I do see this airpark as a, we only have one airpark in Battleground. And so it, you know, after talking with some people, I'm finding out more about the JROTC program here in Battleground through Cascadia, I believe, and, and the Air Force and, and the impact that it has on the community as us being one of the best in the state. That speaks volumes to me about having an airpark in close proximity to, to that. I'm hearing about all the training and how the grass fields are important for soft landing situations and they have enough room there to operate with a little bit of operator error and not cause any major destruction. I see Eaton is getting busier and busier, more and more traffic. And we're already looking at adding some other, well, there's already in development and it's just not finished yet. More housing on Eaton. That's going to cause more impact on that traffic. It's a forty to a fifty mile an hour county zone right there. So they're going pretty fast. I just, I would love to see more jobs creation in the area. I would love us not to be a bedroom community where people just live here and they commute to work, but they actually get to go to work here in Battleground. And I, I value that. And I think that's very important. Those people that live there currently at the Cedars Landing, I believe it's called, and the development behind there and the people in the neighboring areas probably wouldn't mind going to work a couple of blocks away. And for that reason, I'm in favor of option three right now. I think it gives us gives us some freedom and jobs creation of new commercial line industrial uses in that area. I believe it's been a staff recommendation and I heed that. I value that and I appreciate that. Can I evaluate, I appreciate your evaluation of the situation as far as it comes from a legal standpoint for the city. I appreciate that. And I just think it, from my perspective, it's the right thing to do for city of Battleground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Overholzer. I just kind of want to reiterate a couple of those points. I think a lot of frustration maybe came through because this was an airpark that didn't allow airpark type activities previously. I don't think there can be many arguments to that. Now, the city should not be involved in CCNR. So what we need to do is set this land to the best use for for the citizens and for the city, keeping in mind the needs and wants and desires of the residents that would be mostly affected. I, I'm appreciative of the movement that's been made and the effort that's been made. The gentleman who had the testimony regarding hangars, I mean, and fueling stations, I don't, I don't think, well, depending on, I, I don't know, you start getting illegals and you can't change CCNRs. I, I don't understand really why, why we're in the middle of this. But I would love to see that be an actual working flight training pilots, actual classes, a heartbeat of the city instead of just a grass field that some people can land on. That is so underutilized to the city of Battleground, in my opinion. My frustration is, is there. Because I mean, I, I know a lot of us, that's one of our main goals is, I mean, we're, we want jobs created in this, in this town. So people don't have to leave this town to find jobs. We are one of the least, have, have one of the least tax bases in the county. KMS has two billion more in tax base with about the same amount of citizens. And that's simply because, I mean, it helps, they have a port. That airpark could help us get a port. That's one of the things you need. I don't like the fact that it's contentious, but at some point, that's what frustration leads itself into. So I'm excited that parties are at the table, but really, at the end of the day, I, I don't think this should be up here. And I don't know where it should be. I mean, I'm, I'm not a land use attorney. I'm not a, not a land use expert. We're just trying to, we're just trying to do the best we can for the city. So I, I agree with Councilmember Overholzer. I'm in support of option three. And I'd like to see the city and, and move forward with whatever plans they think is in the best interests of, of the city and, and the residents and the neighbors around there. Hopefully we can, there will continue to be some movement and some additional positive steps in this process. So with that, any other questions? Second time through? Floor is open for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. See, I talked too long and then I forget what, what we're talking about. Yeah, there was a motion and a second. It's not an ordinance. We don't have to read it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry six to zero. Thank you. That brings us on to administrative reports. I think there's just twelve of them today?
Oh, yes.
No?
That's not how I'm counting. I don't have any administrative reports.
No administrative reports?
None this evening.
Okay. And council communications? Are there any council communications? Alright. Next meeting is Tuesday, September third, two thousand twenty-four. There is no study session. Regular meeting is at seven PM. This meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-four.